Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's board meeting will be conducted in two parts. The first part is the reorganization meeting. The second part is the regular business meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce Maria Edsawaske, the district attorney, to administer the oath of office to myself and the newly-elected board member, Ms. Edsawaske, Ms. Kowalski, and Ms. Matru. Thank you, Ms. Edsawaske. At this time, we will have the election for president and vice president of the Board of Education. So, starting with the president, may I have a nomination for board president?
So move.
Glory. Dominique?
Glory Kowalski.
May I have a second to that nomination?
Second.
It is my pleasure to declare that Ms. Kowalski has been elected as board president. Now, we have Ms. Edsawaske administer another oath of office, Ms. Kowalski. Congratulations, Ms. Kowalski. For vice president, may I have a nomination for board vice president?
Nancy Castro Giovanni.
May I have a second to that nomination?
Second.
It is my pleasure to declare that Ms. Castro Giovanni has been elected as board vice president. Now, we have Ms. Edsawaske administer the oath of office to our vice president. Congratulations, Ms. Castro Giovanni. And at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting to our board president, Ms. Kowalski. Thank you.
This is the approval of the appointment of officers resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East North Central School District. Hereby approves the appointment of officers as listed in their entirety. Do you have a motion? So move. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And all opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'd like to administer the oath of office to the district clerk. Thank you. I'd like to administer the oath of office to the acting district clerk. And now, please administer the oath of office to district treasurer. I'd also approve approval of the other appointments resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following appointments as listed in their entirety. Do you have a motion? So move. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to approval of designations resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the following designations as listed in their entirety. Do you have a motion? So move. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. This is the end of the reorganization meeting. And now, let's move on to the business meeting. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Santos, do you have any correspondence?
Yes. On 6/23/2023, an email from Rebecca Carilela regarding business course offering.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. And now, Dr. Yanni, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, I want to welcome Ms. Matru to our first Board of Education meeting. My entire team is very excited to work with you and the entire board. So, welcome and congratulations again. I want to thank you, give a big thank you to the Booster Club and the PTA for the very generous donation that we have on the agenda tonight. We're looking forward to the beaches, to have new beaches on the new turf field. So, thank you again for the donation. In terms of the construction, everything is moving along, and construction is construction. And there is a lot of work pretty much in every building. So, we're very excited that everything is moving along according to plans. And we will have a full presentation in August with pictures and an update of where we are. Tonight, we also have several appointments. Some of these administrators are not new to our district, and some are coming from other places. We have conducted extensive interviews, very long runs of interviews. And I'm confident that the recommendation that we have for the board tonight is the most, it's something that we're very proud of. So, we have few people, so I'm going to hold on to congratulations until the board will vote. The first one that we have is Ms. Vader, which is here for the principal of Vernon School. Very excited about that. Ms. Vader has been with us as the director of humanities. Very proud of all the work that she has done. And we truly looking forward to work with you on this new role. We think you're going to do great. Tanya McAlway, she's going to move from Roosevelt to director of humanities. Very excited about that. And tonight, we also have an entire new team at Vernon. So, we have Anastasia Alimares Smith. She's going to be the assistant principal at Vernon. We're very excited about that. We have interviewed a lot, and we think that she's going to do a wonderful job. And we also have Lauren Timoney, which is going to be the nurse at Roosevelt starting in the middle of August. So, we're very excited about that. We wish all of you all the best. This is a wonderful, wonderful district. And the best part of this district is the students that we have. So, looking forward to working with all of you. I want to wish the community a wonderful summer. The buildings are empty, but we have a lot of work going on. So, we can't wait for you to come back and see all the new additions that we have. So, congratulations to all the seniors that graduated this year, and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you, Dr. Yanni. Let's move on to the business facilities report, public hearing of the district-wide safety plan.
Yes, thank you. This evening, we are conducting a public hearing for the district-wide safety plan. I'm going to open for the Republican Board of Education for comments. But before I discuss the plan, first, I'd like to just acknowledge and thank Nora Rintaus and Inta Gironi for their participation on our committee for this year, 2023, for here. Mr. DeLuca for always attending and providing support. Massa Bosse on behalf of the health and safety team there, as well as all our in-house staff that participate. And again, special thanking to our interim security supervisor. So, to discuss some of the changes that we talked about for this year, one big change that we put out into this plan was creating a six-page, very quick emergency plan guide for staff. Students and families have a quick reference on some of the terminology that is used and what are the steps that they should take in the event we do have an emergency. That also tied into what our goals were for next year, is really focusing this plan on tabletop exercises, which we will go through. This year, we implemented a lot of changes to the compliance, addressing the Elizabeth Law and several other changes, as well as the compliance of training budgets. After tonight's meeting, it is posted, or actually, in tonight's meeting, it is posted on the board doc's agenda currently. After tonight's hearing, as of tomorrow, the district website will have not only the safety plan for next year, but as well as that parent's guide. There'll be a 30-day public comment period. Contact information for myself will be on there. Please feel free to reach out if you have any questions. The board will take action on this plan at the August board meeting and submit it to New York State by October 1st in the standardized format, which allows a place for easy accessibility for work. One important note I do want to remind everybody is that only our district safety plan is publicly available on our website. There are building-level safety plans that are managed by each of our building principals and their building-level safety teams. However, those are left as confidential and only shared with limited staff in the event of an emergency. If there's any questions, I'll pick them up. Thank you very much. Hope to be closer tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Vader. Let's move on to approval of minutes. Motion to approve the meeting minutes as listed and attached below. Do you have a motion? So move. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Opportunity for the public to be heard on agenda items. In accordance with the open meeting, all school board meetings and school district business will be discussed or open to the public. The Oyster Bay East North Board of Education welcomes public comment at its meeting. The Board of Education will respond to comments and/or inquiries in the appropriate manner. This portion of the meeting is designed exclusively for agenda items. A sign-in book is provided for those residents wishing to address the board. In order to be recognized, you must be signed in. You speak will be allowed a maximum of three minutes. The board president will employ you to the microphone in the order in which you have signed in. Public discussion is prohibited, dividing matters relating to an individual's reputation, privacy, or right to due process, which in some way could be violated. A second commentary period is provided for non-agenda items prior to adjournment. We thank you for your participation and cooperation. Has anybody signed it for agenda items? Approval of instructional personnel items resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East North Central School District. Hereby approves the instructional personnel items as listed in their entirety and as amended. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of non-instructional personnel items resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East North Central School District. Hereby approves the non-instructional personnel items as listed in their entirety. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of business items resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East North Central School District. Hereby approves the business items as listed in their entirety. Do you have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of special services resolution resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East North Central School District. Hereby approves the special services resolution as listed in their entirety. Do you have a motion? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of new business resolved upon the recommendation superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East North Central School District. Hereby approves new business resolutions as listed in their entirety. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
By its name.
By its name. Motion carries. Let's do it. 13, public participation non-agenda items. Have anybody signed it? Ms. Erin Nastrey, Admin's turn over.
Hello. Thank you, Board of Education, for taking the time to listen to my question. I am a longtime resident of Oyster Bay East North. I grew up here, I went to school at Roosevelt Vernon and the high school. I received an excellent education and went on to become an administrator myself. Over the past couple of years, I have become increasingly concerned about the extremely high turnover rate of administrators. It is my understanding that there is only one administrator that currently remains since Laura Seinfeld retired. I know you can't speak about specific staff members. However, to hear the speaking that the third principal will not be in her position for September is alarming. Can the board speak to the high turnover rate and the perception that administrators are being pushed out? How can you assure stability for our children with so much movement within the district?
So, I am the only administrator left since I came at this point. We also have a principal at the high school that is here. But I think that any organization that is looking, when you're looking at an organization and you see the work being done and people moving up and moving to different positions, I cannot stop that. So, when you look at the, I'm sure you did your research, and I encourage you to do even a more extensive research, you will find out the answer. A lot of the people either retire, a lot of the people moved in higher positions, and a lot of people were promoted from within. And honestly, I can't control what people are doing and where people are going and what their career move is. I have only one objective over here, to provide our students with the best possible opportunities and to empower all students to achieve excellence. And I think we're doing a good job. Because three years ago, we had a graduation rate of 88%. This year, we're very proud to have a graduation rate of 95%. When I look at some of the results that we have this year, and I'm glad that I have that in front of me, so I will share that with you. When you look at the AP results, and over the past two years that I've been here, in 2021, we had a percent of exams with a score of three or higher. We were 56%. Last year, 2022, we had 63%. This year, 2023, we had 69%. When you look at the results at the, for example, the English Regents results, and thank you to the work of a wonderful staff and director of humanities. We went from an average passing rate, last year we were at 89%. We are 95% this year. Mastery rate of 53% last year, which is 85 or more, we went to a 56. Thanks to the work of a wonderful mathematics department, the algebra went from a 5% mastery rate to a 20% mastery rate. Still not the numbers, but we're moving in the right direction. We went from 75 to 82%. I can read a lot of the stats. If you go to my office, I'll be more than happy to just share with you some of the wonderful results of our students. So, just I know I went on a tangent a little bit, but I want to tell you the Cliff's Notes version of my answer is very simple. I don't really care where the other administrators are going and coming and going. All I care about are students and the success of our students. And I'm very proud of that.
I do know most of those staffs as I have done my research. I'm proud of where we are. However, to say you don't care about where they're gone and where they're going. Our children need stability. And I'm really speaking to the board now that it is concerning. Speaking to other parents, it's concerning that our children are having such a high turnover rate. The staff, the teachers are amazing, but they need consistent leadership. And so, it's just something I want to bring to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marty Zaidel, Obian Girls' Vision.
Hi, good evening. Hi. I am not from Oyster Bay. I'm actually one of the families that moved here. I'm not even from Long Island, and neither is my husband. So, I got to choose Oyster Bay, which I'm very proud of. I am a parent of two sons, one who will be going to the first grade and one who's in pre-k. Similar concerns, I think I just want a little clarity with what the vision of the Oyster Bay district is now. Although I understand change is good, I'm an educator myself of 23 years. I think the vision of what this upcoming year looks like, and then five years and 10 years as my children go through all three schools here, concerns me also. I would love to be part of different committees when it comes to interviewing and looking at administration. I know the Vernon principal position was just, that interview process just concluded. But I think a vision of where we're going, other than to say we want to be the best, and I applaud all the growth, I think it's incredible. But the personnel is also important to me as well, and keeping the teachers supported and giving them good leadership is critical, in my opinion. So, overall, what is the vision for next year? What does it look like, and then moving forward after that? Thank you.
The vision of the district is to empower all students to achieve excellence. The long-term vision is to make sure that this becomes the best schools that we have in the nation. Personally, I think that we can be a blue ribbon school. I think that the graduation rate should be closer to 99%, 100%. I also think that in the long term, we should have a mastery level, a diligence level, or at least 65% or above. I think that we should be in the 80% in terms of the passing rate. I think that in terms of the overall results of the AP, we have a lot of AP offerings. I think that students should be able to receive three or higher so they can receive credit at the college level. And I think the numbers are showing that we are moving up in the right trend. And the other important thing is, we want to make sure that the students are successful. So, for example, some of the wonderful things that we have done, aside from the core series, we used to have board meetings run by outside companies. We do it all in-house. So, we have the board, the community has approved the capital improvement project that we've been working on. We finished the first phase on the budget, on time, with the turf field. We're working on the second phase, and the second phase will have a broadcasting studio. We have students receiving CTE recognition. We have seal of bilaurecy that we have, that students can receive attached to their diploma. We're receiving recognition at the, not just the academic level, but also at the athletic level. Students are winning championships. Students are being successful. And the most important thing, we're looking at the attendance rate. We're looking at the students, how they're doing in the class, not just on the academic level, but also on the social and emotional level. And the other thing that we're doing, and I want to thank the director of athletics, we have a wonderful athletic program, and we are bringing the spirit back in school. That has nothing to do with the previous administration. That has to do with the fact that for two years, the world of education, the world in general, was upside down. So, when you look at the spirit that we brought back in school after COVID, I think it's impressive. We had a pep rally, we had a winter, similar to a pep rally, we had a spring event. We had a first time, we had a dance back in school. Students seem to be excited. We are remodeling all the buildings. We are focusing on the arts. Students have been recognized at the regional level, and you could see on the website and all the wonderful work that we have done. So, when I look back at the work that we have done over the past two years, I think it's impressive how much we've kind of brought back to the students all the activities that they had in the past and eventually, you know, was put to a stop. So, long term, my dream, and I think it's achievable, is that this would become a blue ribbon district. It would be 100%. That we do three-to-eight assessment will be number five, for example. We are number five right now in grade schools. We should be number nine, number 10. Some of the data that is being pulled by grade school is data that is not right. So, we have students receiving college credit because of dual enrollment in the classes. They receive the storybook. They have other colleges that they have over here. They're not being recognized. So, grade school doesn't even know. So, we scored zero on that end. We have a Nenish report. We're looking at some of the facility. We have a score of a C+. We have a score of B- when we have outstanding facility that is the envy of people around. We have a selling team. We have a crew team. We have a fencing team that has generated athletes there. We have a fencing team that is generating athletes that are going to top school, Division One school. I don't think anybody could ask more from my team. And, and I understand that as a new person coming in, bringing a new administrator because some of them moved in better places. And I don't mean to say in a disrespectful way that I don't care where they go, but I can't control if you are an administrator in this building and tomorrow you come to me and you say, I'm becoming an assistant superintendent in another district when here you're a supervisor. I can't stop you from doing that because it's your personal career. So I do have to focus on the numbers. I have to focus on the value that we can bring to the school because there is no other way to do it. This school at 88%, I'm sorry to refinish. A school like this with a $30,000 more per pupil expenditure, okay? With a 5% of A receiving and having a graduation rate of 89, 88% is not a reflection of the type of students that we have. I've been a superintendent in another district and I believe that our students are the best students that I ever had in my career. I've been a teacher, I've been a professor at NYU. I've been, I've been in another district as an assistant super. You can look at my resume and I can tell you, I don't say this lightly and I will not make a statement in public that I think this could be a blue ribbon school. But we can and we have all the requirements because we have the best students.
Sure. So I have the same hope and goal for this district with my young children over here at school. I teach in a school that has a blue ribbon school as part of that. And I know what an incredible undertaking it is. Looking, you had mentioned the change in administration. The policy or the way that the board and the interview committee works, are there groups of parents that are invited in?
Yes.
Groups?
Yes.
And that will be put out to Roosevelt parents to join that committee since it's posted already?
Listen, at the end of the day, I'm the CEO of the board, hired me to run the building, to run this school, right? So at the end of the day, I have to recommend to the board. So I can have a committee, I can have 3,000 committees, right? But at the end of the day, I'm going to be the one saying to the board, this is my pick because I have to work with that person and I have to make sure. And I think my record shows that the people that are hired have done a wonderful job, number one. Number two, I think that at the end of the day, every leader has his own style. And I think that at the end of the day, the board has to look at my performance based on the performance of the students and how well they're doing. And if I'm not doing a good job, then they'll hire a different superintendent. I think that's the beauty of having a contract.
So Roosevelt parents will be invited, will be invited to join?
Yes, we always are in contact. I'm in contact to my board. We have parents volunteer. You know, at the, at the end of the day, we'll, we'll put up a committee together and that's the, that's what we have. Sometimes the pool is not that deep when it comes to hiring candidates. So I will make the decision to create a committee, when to create a committee. If I interview somebody and I think that person is wonderful and I'll bring it to the board and we'll interview and I'll go from there. But I, I can't, I can't talk about, you know, how I'm going to hire people. When I hire people, they're best for my students.
And actually, I'd just like to say something. First of all, thank you for living in Oyster Bay. I've been here since 1993 and I remember when I was here, we had a lot of administrators move in and left. And I was a young parent with young kids. And I went and started asking around like, why do these administrators leave? And I got the response that, you know, we're a small district and these administrators have the ability to move up. Unlike teachers, which tend to stay in the same job they have ten years, they stay as teachers. It's real, unfortunately, and I think that's unfortunately, there are no levels for teachers. Whereas administrators, they can move up and they can't just, they don't just move up into another job, they'll move from a small school to a large school. So we suffer from administrators moving from small schools to large schools to get more experience. We might not have that many openings. So if somebody wants to go and become a director of math, we might not have that open or another director of another area where some schools have multiple directors. So we do suffer from that. We do like to promote internal, like we've done. I see several administrators now out here that we've actually promoted internally to we think that's sometimes the best way. But it has always consistently been a problem in small schools. We might talk to other board members of other small schools, they say they have the same problem. And I think it's just inherently, it is an issue with small schools and people moving a lot. As far as our goals, we always need to have goals. And I have to tell you, the Board of Education has been very upset with our ratings, our test scores, our graduation rates. My kids went through the school and I know that they were some really smart kids in their classes, really smart, who would get great scores on SATs and then couldn't perform on an AP exam. And the question is, why is that? I mean, I know these kids are smart. So we want to, we want to look into that data. We want to figure out what's going on in the classroom, how we can correlate scores in the classroom to scores on these exams. Because I know with my kids, they would get 95s in a certain class and then they would get a bad score on a Regents exam. And those two should correlate. It shouldn't be like, I know as a parent where my child stands. So yes, I think, and that being on this board for eight years, you can see that there are certain things you focus on as you go through because it's hard to focus on everything at once. Think we're committed right now to improve our academics, to look at these, like, why are we having a low rating? Because why would a parent like you want to move into a district and you have a great school rating of five, right? Well, we, Senator Dr. Yanni, you need to look into this. I want you to drill down into that data and figure out what's going on with those scores and are they right? And that's how we found a lot of these issues, right? The seventh and eighth graders are in the high school and that's who's killing our scores because they're not taking AP exams, right? So we know that the data does something with the data and we also know there's things in the classroom we need to improve. So I think overall, that's our focus. And I hope you agree that that's a focus that we want to get these kids up there because I think that's what we do, we have great sports. My kids all played sports here, went to great schools on sports. But academics is really where we're lacking right now. Thank you. Ms. Parades?
So I'm here on behalf of the board committee chair. I'm here in reference to the Board of Education policy number 8840, which talks about field chairs and experience, specifically overnight field chairs. Actually, G, which says the furthest distance traveled by a footballer is the driving force of the most direct. So I want to address the policy itself first, that how could this policy be handed out with other teams, such as we have research, science, youth, the ads. It could be a sailing team or any other sports team that has nationals at the goal because they could be held from Texas, Kansas, or Florida. The other point I have about the policy is you adopted this policy on January 24th, 2023, and yet your team was able to travel to Florida on February 10th and return on February 12th. So how could the team travel if this policy was already in place? And precedent has been set for this, this trip as a personality strength. While this, I would want to know this policy moving forward. So today, we were basically informed that this policy will no longer allow them to compete at Nationals at ESPN in Florida. So our first point is that Nationals is a league competition where you design by colleges for cheerleaders to present themselves to get into college and to get scholarships. UCA Nationals is the most prestigious cheerleading competition in the United States. There are no other competitions within 550 miles for this team to compete at, at this level. The team, for the first time this year, received this bid as a full group team and also attended counties this year for the first time ever in our district. Our team has only lost one senior and would only come along. This team never stops working towards Nationals at the goal. Open gyms was held whole spring and just today, they began their first summer open gym. The cheer program will only grow in attendance at cheer because of what we see in attendance at the cheer clinics from pre-k to kindergarten that come to support us and also students who we know who attend private cheer programs. I don't understand why we wouldn't want to showcase our students, abilities at a national level, from Plannage, Bat Page, Park, Wantaw, Playasse, Washoe, and Lassikira, and Coltspring Harbor. Coltspring Harbor actually attended Nationals and still has a large fan base. Competing at the county level only gives us the opportunity to compete at tumbling. However, the limitations of a small school, lack of gym, lack of gym time at a tumbling facility to learn tumbling, a lack of equipment at our school, we don't have a second set of pads. We're always fighting over gym time because we stretch our gym space in this district to an absolute limit, especially in the winter season. At the county level, we competed against some of the best teams in the counties who make it to national finals. We are truly at heart a non-tumbling team. The only way that we compete at any sort of competitive level is when we compete at regionals and at internationals. And this is where we meet our true best match. This year, we were only two teams to win the championship finals and this was our coach's first year on the team. She strongly believes this team is going to only get better each year. And speaking with the parents today, they are, feel that we are being discriminated against by having this policy in place that does not allow our students to get recruitment from colleges and to be exposed to scholarship laws. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Someone? Second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone.